G S one four three, three one eight one one A five regarding potential real estate acquisitions, partials zero seven oh nine oh oh two one X eight oh, zero seven zero nine zero nine seven five and zero seven zero nine oh nine seven five A. Can I get a motion to go into closed session?
Motion to go into closed session.
All in favor? Unanimous.
I was also told, I need a motion to invite Brandy Deese into closed session with us.
Oh, okay. All in favor? Unanimous.
Do you want me to do the motion to close?
David.
Motion to close?
Oh, yeah, hold on, I was reading this, I'm sorry. Yes, can I get a, well, first of all, we returned to open session, so can I get a, somebody to give me a motion to close, close session?
Motion to close, close session.
All in favor? Unanimous. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, special meeting.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Six fifteen workshop, it is six to nine. Okay. Give me one minute to organize myself here for a minute, that might take longer than a minute, but. Price Site Concept Plan. I'm assuming you're here and ready to talk, so welcome.
Yes, there I am. Mayor, members of council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Bridget Grant, I'm a land use consultant with Maureen Van Allen. Do you need me to provide address and, address?
No, you're good, you're good.
Perfect, just checking.
You've said enough.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight on behalf of Prime Carolina, as their developer for the site, and I'm also here with Hee Nguyen, he's the civil engineer that's going to help me through any site design questions. As I mentioned, it's Prime Carolina's, Maureen Van Allen, I'm a land use consultant, and then DPR is the civil engineer. The site is a thirty-nine point one-two acre site that's located just on the south side of Price Road, so it's combined of two parcels totaling that thirty-nine acres. The existing count, the existing zoning is in the county, it's the RA forty, and we're hoping to rezone the site conditionally through the Indian Trail process to something that's similar to what's already in the surrounding area, which is SF five. If you were to look at the property overall, as I mentioned, the existing zoning is the RA forty, and we would be able to develop single-family homes within Union County, but we'd like to do something within Indian Trail to provide a little more lot flexibility that ultimately also gets more open space and better lot design. So the proposed use of single-family homes, the total number of lots that we'd like to develop is ninety-eight. That's a really small plan, so I'm going to go ahead and flip to the next slide, but I do want you to see that the total tree save required is five point eight-three acres, and then we've got two point eight acres of open space. It's much easier to read when you look at it at this level, but you can see we've got our access point right off of Price Road. The street network has sidewalk and street trees throughout. There's also an access point for the proposed extension of Fawn Drive, you can see on the south side of the piece of paper. We have proposed tree save that's shown in the darker green around the periphery of the site. We've also got the two stormwater management ponds shown in blue, and an area on the back side of the site to be dedicated to park and rec with a minimum twenty-foot perimeter on that south side and north side of the property. I think the one thing that's important to note is that you can see that there's a good bit of open space at the center of the site and trails throughout, and it's one of the differences that if we were able to develop within Indian Trail and using the Indian Trail ordinance, we'd be able to provide more open space and tree save with a lot configuration that supports that natural environment rather than the larger lots. These are just a few of the architectural concepts we're looking at. We're still fairly early in the process, so we know it'll be something we collaborate with on staff to ensure that we're meeting the expectations of what you would like to see here in Indian Trail. And because community open space is such an important part of our vision, we wanted to share a few images that really show that this isn't just the open space that often gets pushed to the periphery of the site, the unusable areas, the areas that are in the buffers. This is something that we have a vision will be active trails, playgrounds, and opportunities for people to use, use the amenities, not just push them to the buffers. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
How many homes per acre?
Ninety-eight. Two point five.
What did, how many?
Ninety-eight on thirty-nine acres.
Ninety-eight on thirty-nine acres, and they're, they're single-family homes and, on how big, approximately how big a lot are they?
The lot size is approximately eight thousand square feet, that's the minimum.
And is that like a quarter acres, if you broke it down into, I'm just curious, I, how many, how many feet are in an acre, Brandy?
So that would be about five per acre.
Five per acre?
But then they're counting all the open space and amenity area, which gives them the two point five acre.
It basically puts all the open space into protected common open spaces rather than into backyards. One of the things I've seen throughout my career in working in various municipalities and even in my own neighborhood, people tend to take the trees that are in their backyard, the lawns keep on growing, the pools get put in, the basketball courts get put in, the play areas, and you start to lose all the environmentally sensitive or protected areas. So when you pull all of those out and put them on the periphery of the site or in common open space, it does a better job of protecting the open space in the long term.
Do you, do you have sewer for this, or?
That's a great question. Sewer, is that something we have been spoken and met with Union County Public Works already? There is an off-site sewer that is, if we go out on that stop street and then go back to the main, main road, and then there's existing gravity sewer on the other side, and that's where we're proposing to tie in. So that's would be a process, go through the rezoning process, and then we work with Union County Public Work for the gravity sewer extension.
So Union County hasn't approved it yet?
No, sir, everything is conceptual at this point.
Okay.
Any, any more questions?
Is this an annexation or not?
This, it would be an annexation?
Yes.
And, and so it's, it's in the county now, correct?
It is, you can see where the site's outlined in red, and there are some sites in Indian Trail that are right next to it, but largely the brighter orange area shows you majority of where Indian Trail is.
Ah-huh.
And we can provide another map to you to show there's some other.
So you're, you're real near Porter Ridge High School then, correct? Isn't that, isn't that very near Porter Ridge?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
You're close to the Wakefield community, correct?
I would need to turn on some more map layers to confirm the exact neighborhood.
So it's kind of, we don't really have much around there.
No, so it's in the county now, and I guess you're relatively, you're, you're right in, so you're in the county, but you're, you're right around the corner from Monroe, and you're, you're right between Monroe and, and Indian Trail, basically.
That's one of the things that we've been working through. We know that there are site design options that we could work within Union County and work with the lot sizes that they have, but smaller lot sizes and common open spaces outside of lot sizes are more preferred by buyers today and more efficient use of the lot. So we wanted to explore the option of developing under Indian Trail standards, the ability to increase the open space, do the park and rec dedication and donation, provide a little more certainty on the quality of homes that would be built on the site. When we go through the conditional zoning, we can add specific conditions on what you would like to see in terms of quality or materials or other features for the site.
Very good, and is this the owner? Are you the owner, sir?
He's not, he's the civil engineer.
No, I'm, no, right here, you.
Yes. No, he's not.
No, no, right there, right you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, he's the civil engineer.
I, I, I am the civil engineer for the site. The owner's supposed to be here actually today, but he's not, yes.
Thank you, all right. If, we don't have any other questions? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, we appreciate your time.
All right. Can I get a motion to close a special meeting? Do I need to get a motion to close this, what? We don't do one, do we? Okay, well then, we're good till six-thirty, we've got six minutes.
Hopefully you guys have comments on this project, if you could filter them through the mic so that we can get them back to the developer.
For, against, I'd like to see more information on this, just shoot me an email or let me know, and I'll send it over to the planning department.
You gonna send an email? You don't want it now?
Well, if you want to give it to me now, yes.
I'll take, I'll wait for the email. I can be patient. Thank you.
All right.
Buddy, if we'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I noticed the Boy Scouts that moved in, if, if you guys would like to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, I would be honored if you would. Right there, be, fine. Right, right here. If you'll start us off.
All right. So we're gonna get started.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, without any doubt.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys.
We're curious. I'm glad you're here, sir, I'm glad you're here. If we'll all remain standing, please, for a moment of silence. You may be seated. Welcome to Boy Scouts here tonight, we have Gary Sides here tonight, Union County Public Schools, you're gonna get up, he's not speaking, public comments, so, welcome Gary. Tell you a little bit about some town events, I think the only town event we have between now, in the next meeting, is the Harlem Wizards. It's at Sun Valley High School, I think it's February the second, which is a Friday night. The night is funny, theatrical, exciting, spectacular, the gym will, will be, have, you'll just have a great time. Has anybody ever been here, been to the Harlem Wizards? We had it one year, we had it last year. Jim, Jim, you were, you won the dunk contest, did you not? I was thinking you did, anyway. It's a lot like the Harlem Globetrotters, and believe it or not, it's a great fundraiser for, for the town, a lot of the teachers get out there, and I think a lot of people, staff and, and council will be participating or doing something with it, but every dollar of that goes to, I believe, Hayden, doesn't it go to a scholarship fund for high school students? And it's just another thing that the Rotary Club, another good thing Rotary Club does for the town and, for the people of the town, so, much appreciated, and we'll have a good time, and, is it sold out yet?
Not yet.
Not yet, it will be sold out, I'll, I'll guarantee you that.
Sold last time.
Yeah, it did sell out last time, you could not get a, you could not get a seat in, in Sun Valley, so, we had a good time. And then I, I wanted to mention something too, that's not on our list, that I'm very proud of, in Indian Trail, we have something called the Laddie School of Arts over near Walmart, and I went to a play, Anesthesia, did I say that right? Last Saturday. They're amazing, and it's right here in Indian Trail, it was at the Dow Center in Monroe, and the talent that we have in our town, it was a musical, it was absolutely amazing, amazing, and they have another June performance, I think they're gonna do Footloose, if I'm not mistaken, and, man, get, get on board with it, because you think you're watching Broadway, I really, I really believe that, so, with that being said, it was a really good time. Brings us to agenda additions and deletions, do we have any? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion, okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, that brings us up to presentations, and that is, Hayden, are you gonna do that?
I'll do it.
This is the, to announce the 2023 Christmas Parade winners.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, should have held the parade today, or last week, it's pretty chilly, so it would have felt a little more like winter. You know, this evening, we are here to recognize the folks that participated in the parade and then were selected by the Lions Club for our judges, and again, thank you to the Rotary Club for helping with the lineup. We have some awards to hand out, I do not believe anyone's here just because of the rescheduled dates, but the Lions Club Choice went to our Grand Marshal, Don Blankenberg, the most creative went to Rave Dance Company, the best business went to Correll Family Costumes, most use of red and green went to Allure Dance Creation, and a crowd favorite, Roar Taekwondo took home best youth. Again, the, the parade is, is really fun, because the, the entire community comes together, and I saw you point over my shoulder.
I believe rave dance is here.
Oh, perfect, well, that'll work, well, I'll step out, grab her award, and we'll take some pictures outside, so I appreciate that, but that's all I have unless anyone has any questions about the parade.
Now, who's here? I'm sorry.
Rave Dance.
Okay, the, what dance?
Rave.
Rave Dance. Well, congratulations, do, do we not have an award?
We do, I have it in the, I didn't think anyone was gonna be here, so I didn't bring them in, but I'll meet them outside, and we'll hand out the award and take a picture.
No offense, but would you mind to go get the?
Yeah, absolutely. Give me ten seconds.
And then we, I want to get them, their picture in here today, so, thank you so much for being here.
And I think they won before, I believe, I think that they're a, a multiple winner, I'm pretty sure I've seen that name before.
Oh, have you?
I think.
Oh. We compete as well.
That'd be something if, if Hayden really didn't have the, on his, here he comes, here he comes.
Put him on the.
Oh, he does have it, there he does, there he does. Come on up. There we go, sorry about that.
Oh, thank you. Anyone want to join?
Yeah, I think I'll do what you call a photobomb.
You're not gonna get in the picture?
I, I'm not getting in there.
Oh, come on. Come on, somebody, she'll, she'll get you.
Next year, we'll do this again next year.
All right, everybody ready? Thank you.
Okay. It brings us to public comments. By addressing council, you acknowledge you have read the town's public comment rules and will abide by them. Mr. Gary Sides, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. There is actually another event which involves three of the schools here in the town of Indian Trail, happening in January. The Franklin Covey Leader in Me program is, it's an international program, which is based on a specific curriculum involving leadership, planning, organization, and students collaborating in small groups to achieve their academic goals. Ten of our Union County Public Schools participate in the Leader in Me program. On January thirty-first and February first, Franklin Covey is hosting a national leadership conference in Charlotte, which will have over a thousand attendees from all over the southeast. I've had the opportunity some years ago to attend one of the conferences, and it is quite an event. The suppositum is to allow both members of Leader in Me and schools that are investigating the program to network and facilitating learning experiences for the schools and the educators, and it enables members that are involved in the program to share insights, best practices, and learn from other schools as they've implemented the program. On page, on day two of the event, actually involves site visits to Leader in Me schools. Indian Trail Elementary and Shiloh Valley Primary and Elementary have been chosen as three site schools. We will have, we will be invited from folks all over coming to visit the schools and watch the students in action. Indian Trail Elementary was actually the first Leader in Me school, it was organized some years back by then Principal Candace Boatright, and has progressed to the lighthouse status, which is the highest designation for a Leader in Me school. We actually have four Leader in Me schools within the town of Indian Trail. Besides Indian Trail Elementary, Shiloh Valley Primary and Elementary, Sun Valley Middle School is also a lighthouse Leader in Me school. So this is a very prestigious event, Union County Public Schools is very proud to host this event, and we are a very strong supporter of the Leader in Me program. In the spring, March or April, they haven't been scheduled yet, each Leader in Me school will ha, hold a leadership day, and if you have not had the opportunity to attend, I'm going to make sure you're invited, because that is a very special day of programs actually run by the students themselves, and inclu, includes tours of the classrooms to see the curriculum in action. So I want to encourage you, if your schedules permit, to visit a leadership day at Indian Trail Elementary or one of our other schools. Thank you very much.
Before you sit down, I'd like to ask, anybody have any questions?
Can you make sure we get an email on the date and everything?
Yes, sir. As soon as it's set, I will make sure you get individual personal invites. And on a personal note, I wanted to commend your Crooked Creek Park. It, I live in Monroe, but on that end of Monroe, and my son and I utilize it, just started utilizing, he, he got into a, a running thing, and so he dragged me along, but I'm walking, I'm not running. But that is a beautiful facility. I want to commend the town for having the foresight to invest in such a fine park. I, I'm really impressed, I can, I can only imagine the activity when there are games in, in action, and everybody's during the summer, I, the, the little workout area, and I'm even gonna bring our little dog to the dog park, so I wanted to just, on a side note, commend the town for your investment in that, in that park.
Well, thank you, Gary, and, and I'd like to just say a couple of words about you. Thank you for the park, because I'm very partial to parks, I think everybody here knows that, but, one thing about Gary, and I want to say this about Gary, is I've run into him at different school functions, last year, was it, well, it's been over a year, maybe when, when Sun Valley was playing in their volleyball, and they were playing for the state, they actually played for the state championship and did well. And I was going to the games, and I saw Gary there, and I kept mentioning, hey buddy, and we'd talk, and I've seen him in about every function there is for a school, and you, you put your money where your mouth is, and that's what I, that's what I really admire. I admire you for what you do, because you're not on the school board just to say you're on the school board, you're one of the hardest workers I've ever seen, and.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just wanted to say that he drove the school bus to Raleigh when they played for the state championship in Raleigh, and, and that, I just found that amazing, I thought, what a great guy to, to, to want to drive the school bus. Unfortunately, we finished second in the state and didn't, didn't win it, but I wanted to thank you for it, for your, for how much effort you put in to the schools.
Well, thank you, it is a true, I am blessed to serve such a fine school system. Both my late parents were educators, and two of my three sisters were educators, and so I ended up on the school board, because I, I couldn't get a real job as an educator, so I ended up this way, but it is, we are blessed with a, a great board, a great school system, our staff and educators, and our superintendent, we are, we are very blessed here in Union County, and interactions I have with other districts just supports that even more. So I want to thank the town for its support of our schools as well.
Thank you, Gary, appreciate you, appreciate you coming up and speaking. Next, before you come up, Andy, I'd like to, Andy is our new police chief, Andy Moss, Andy, just became, actually, are you officially, I thought it was gonna be February first, but.
Yes, it is officially pay-scale official, get the, yes, February.
Well, I'm gonna just tell you how happy we are to have you, and, you know, if, when you come up, are you gonna, you're gonna give us a long, you come up and give us a long form?
I can.
Okay, if you would, tell us, when you come up, a little bit about yourself first, if you would, because I know you have an impressive, to me, it's impressive, okay, so come on up.
Well, good afternoon. So I've met pretty much all of you, and like I said, I've been up here in Indian Trail as, this, well, it was just February would be my first full year, as the, one of the lieutenants here, taking over as, on, you know, as captain, February one. Little bit about me, been at the sheriff's office July seventh of ninety-nine was my official hire date, so I've been there my entire career. From Union County, born and raised, law enforcement in Union County for, for years, my, I kind of followed in my grandfather's footsteps, he was an actual constable of Jackson Township before they had the Waxaw Police Department, so, kind of followed in his footsteps, but been, worked in the jail, worked on patrol, worked, and, and was a SRO at Forest Hills High School for several years, actually, Mr. Sides doesn't remember me, but I've been at several of those long-time school board meetings from way back in the day when everybody wanted to get up and, and not behave themselves. But we got through all that, so we'll be all right. But, yeah, so I was a school resource officer for several years, worked in investigations for several years, had, had the opportunity to do quite a bit during my tenure there at the office, and sheriff saw fit to put me up here in Indian Trail, and I have thoroughly enjoyed it, still have quite a bit to learn, but we're gonna jump in with both feet, and one of my favorite sayings always, and kind of one of my mottos is, does anybody, anybody ever watched the Andy Griffith Show? You remember when the Darlins came to town? And they, they got ran out of every place that they ever tried to play because of the noise ordinance, right? So the last scene in that show is they're all sitting in the jail, and the sheriff's playing the guitar with them, and he says, "Mr. Darlin', what key y'all in?" He said, "Sheriff, it don't matter, just jump in wherever you can and hang on." So that's my motto, for as long as they let me stay up here in Indian Trail, we just gonna jump in wherever we can and hang on and do the best we can. Looking forward to, I know, Mayor, you and I have met previously, and looking forward to just seeing how can we grow together, so.
Well, thank you, Andy, and I wanted you to do that, because I knew you were a Union County guy, and you'd been there all your life, we're lucky to have you, and we're, with that being said, and I didn't tell you about any of this before you got up there, so if you want to take me outside.
No, I, I just, I just, listen, I appreciate you telling stories, I'm good.
Go ahead.
Um, but no, just real quick, I have, I actually printed you guys off the report, I know this is what Captain Hunky has given you guys in the past, it's a monthly report. The chief and I are actually working on some, kind of a, a wrap-up year-end 2023, kind of summary slideshow presentation to give you guys, that'll be coming up here in the next little while, but as far as the, you can, you, we haven't had a chance to sit down and, and see, you know, kind of what do you guys want from us as far as a monthly report, so this is what, kind of what you've been given, and it's a breakdown of, of the reported crimes from December of twenty-three. So it's, things are going well, we are progressing right along, and gonna keep pushing forward. You guys have any questions for me?
Any questions for Andy?
Just glad to have you, sir.
Glad to be here. Glad to be here.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Clarence?
Comment, congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
And I will not hold it against you that you went to Parkwood and that we.
Everybody's got to be from somewhere.
Might have played against each other in football back in the day, so, but congratulations.
Yes, sir. I, I, just to my recollection, I know Parkwood didn't win too many games when I was playing, but we did beat Sun Valley my senior year. I'm just saying.
You didn't have to say that part, but congratulations.
Thank you, Andy. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Unanimous. Brings us up to public hearings. Ms. Brandy, if you would, come up by addressing council, you know, read the town's public comment rules and will abide by them. I don't think we have anybody. This is for ZM 2023-0137 Younts Road, Lot 5, rezoning, Ms. Dees.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. Tonight we have two public hearings, the first of which, as the mayor just said, was Younts Road, Lot 5. This is a conventional rezoning, so no site plan. We don't get to craft up a bunch of conditions that the applicant has to agree to, just a regular rezoning for you to consider. So what we're looking at is, it's one very small parcel in Rosemary Park, Lot Number 5 on Younts Road. It's between Brown Lane and Woodhaven Lane, and it's about 2.5 acres that is currently vacant. The intent of this rezoning, initially when we talked to the owners, they would like to develop a small office building for their business. Their main trade is refurbishing tennis courts. However, looking at the size of the lot, by the time you, you know, put in parking and lighting and landscaping and buffers, we really don't feel that the lot's large enough for that, so they would have to acquire additional property. They understood that, but they still want to pursue. If they're not able to do that, then they want to market and sell the property, so. And here is an aerial view for you with the property highlighted in red. So if you're not familiar with Younts Road, it's the road that runs behind Walmart. And here's street view. The property is on the right. Here's another view of it from the left. And then a cou, we're going to give a couple of photos just to kind of, if you're not familiar with the area, to kind of really show you that it's, it's a little bit of a hodgepodge. You've got this unit. You've got these two units. This one's fairly new, the older one on the right. You'll notice the, the lot size is a lot larger than the lot we're considering. That is because this area does not have sewer infrastructure. And then here's two structures as well. And then here's your zoning. So you see quite a bit of SF1, single family. And then in June of last year, this, the board approved rezoning to GBD. So this is the area that we really looked at and said, okay, these small lots don't work without the infrastructure. And there was one developer that owned quite a bit and said, I would like to do light industrial. Old Hickory is nearby, so we're really taking a look at this area and, and perhaps changing the vision of, of what this area is going to be. And this, this parcel tonight goes along with that previous request. You see the future land use map here before you. Then a little bit more on the analysis and details. So again, residential development as it is zoned today, you've got sewers not an option. Most of the lots, and this lot in fact, failed the perk test for the soils. And the small lots don't, you know, even if it perked, it probably wouldn't be large enough to account for septic tank. Commercial growth, you know, or again, that, that rezoning from last year, you've got the school over there, and then you've got Trails Dynasty Mini Golf as well. So you, you've got some commercial going on in that area. So the comprehensive plan, we talked about this last June, the future land use recommendations, we really feel like that we probably in our next update need to reevaluate this area. One of the key details is that the comp plan does talk about, this area is expected to become a subregional activity center, and this area of the 74 corridor is currently suburban in character, but we anticipate for it to become more urban, so that helps support this request. It also calls for Younts Road to become a four-lane activity center boulevard. Now, that, that's a ways off, it's not anywhere in the plans. That's kind of lo, long-range plans. But you can see that that road is much busier. I will confess with the super street, I often use it as a cut-through rather than having to navigate back to 74. Here is the 74 West Corridor plan, just showing that, that anticipated for, for-lane thoroughfare at some point in the future. And then finally, the requested zoning is for General Business District, which is consistent with that previous request from last year. Residential development's challenging, we do see commercial growth existing already. And then again, the, the road improvements eventually to come for Younts Road, reduce the, the residential appeal. On November the 21st of last year, Plan and Board voted to recommend approval of this request, and we do feel that it's reasonable and consistent. So our consistency statement, this proposed rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest because it promotes the goals of the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan in the areas of infrastructure goal number one and economic development goal number one by a balanced tax base and promoting a diverse local economy. The requested action is before you tonight, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Brandy. I'm assuming there is no applicant presentation, I mean, there's nobody here?
No applicant presentation, correct.
Okay, and there is no one on the, to, to speak? Nobody's here to speak? So I'd like to, if I may, open and close public hearing. Yeah.
Is this a property that they already bought?
Dennis, Dennis, can we, we'll answer, we'll ask questions, but we, is somebody able to give me a motion to?
I'm sorry.
And then, yeah, go ahead.
I make a motion to open and close public hearing.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay, now Dennis, go ahead.
Is this a property that they've already bought?
Yes, they've already acquired the property.
So they bought it before they came in?
Yes, and that, that's not unusual for Rosemary Park. You know, the lots are, are fairly inexpensive and people will dive in and, and purchase it without doing their due diligence, unfortunately.
And no sewer and, yeah.
But they do have the potential for the, the rezoning from last year, that, that owner could acquire it for, you know, additional open space to meet some of their requirements and, and help in their development, so.
I got you. Any, Todd?
No questions.
Anybody else? Okay, there's no, no counsel deliberation, cannot get a motion?
I make a motion to approve ZM 2023-0137 Younts Road, Lot 5, rezoning as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous. All right, it brings us down to the consistency findings.
Okay, I make a motion to adopt the consistency findings as read into the record by staff for ZM 2023-0137.
All in favor? Unanimous. All right, Brandy, go on to the, the next one, please.
All right, thank you, sir. Our next public hearing for tonight is CZ 2023-0132 Axiflow Technologies. This is a conditional rezoning, so you will see conditions attached to this approval. So we're looking at one parcel here as well, it's 1.91 acres. They're requesting to go from CZ GBD to CZ Light Industrial. And the request, the requested rezoning, this is actually within the old Hickory Business Park, but for whatever reason, this one parcel years ago got colored on the map red instead of purple, and they are looking to develop it and realize that they are somewhat restricted in the permitted uses that General Business would allow versus Light Industrial. So we're just really lining it up with the existing zoning in the area, but because it's a part of Old Hickory and that was a specific approval, that's why you see it as a CZ. We want to keep that Old Hickory standards attached to it. And again, the applicant is Axiflow Technologies. So here's the parcel right on the corner of Indian Trail Fairview and Stinson Hardest. Here's the street view. The opposite direction, property's on the right. This is looking the left side, see there, you see the, the entrance to Old Hickory. And then another shot, property's on the right side. Here's an aerial, so you can see that existing light, light industrial around it. And then here you can see the, the purple versus the, the bluish color and the hatched areas. So everything that's hatched just lets you know that there's a CZ or some type of special approval on it. Future land use calls this out to be consistent with Old Hickory. And then a little bit more of the details, you can see the adjacent properties, you've got Light Industrial and then one General Business District zoned property over to the east. Future Land Use recommends office, which is consistent with Old Hickory. It also mentions this area is planned as a regional employment center, and you can see that's played out well within the Old Hickory corridor. And then future development in the area, you know, Old Hickory, we're very blessed that Old Hickory has just about built out, so there's just only a few remaining parcels there. On November 21st of 2023, Plan and Board voted to recommend approval of this request. So our consistency statement for this project, this proposed rezoning is reasonable and is in the public interest because it promotes the goals of the Indian Trail Concert Comprehensive Plan in the areas of land use and housing goal number one, where it avoids potential land conflicts, and then economic development goal number one with a balanced tax base and promoting a diverse local economy. You have your requested action before you tonight, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Brandy. Again, we don't have an applicant here for a presentation. Oh, we do? We do, okay.
Applicants here, no presentation, but they're here, but they're here for questions.
Just here in case someone asks, okay.
Correct.
Got you, okay. All right, we do have, we have no one for public hearing, so again, I'd like to open and close public hearing, get a motion, yeah.
I make a motion to open and close public hearing.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, council, you have any questions or anything on it? If not, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'd like to, to make a motion to approve CZ 2023-0132 Axiflow Technologies as presented and a motion.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Motion to, to adopt a statement of consistency as read into the record by staff for CZ
All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, sir.
Brandy, thank you. Brings us to Old Business, an ARPA update, Mr. McLamb.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How are y'all doing? It seems like it's been forever since I've gotten up here and done one of these, but we'll run through this really quick. We just started back up this week, having our, we're going to do them bi-weekly for a little bit here, our ARPA meetings of our internal group. We talked through a little bit of the ARPA funding that's still available, mainly for stormwater uses. Todd's actively working through some of the projects that had already been approved by council for those, for those stormwater projects, and then we're going to see what's left. So we'll be bringing back potentially some new stuff for y'all to approve in the next couple of months. Now that we get down and start looking at ARPA-enabled funds, so remember those, those funds that were freed up, for lack of a better term, because of the ARPA funds being used to pay for other things. A little bit of an update on the funds that were from FY23. Two of the three fire trucks are supposed to be here probably in the next 15 to 20 days, and then the last one will be about another 60 days. And then all three of those will be here. Emerald Woods Waterline Project is running about two months behind schedule right now. They are in their easement acquisition phase. If y'all remember, that's kind of on the north side of town, helping some of those residents over there. They hope that they'll be able to speed up the process now that they are actually in that easement acquisition phase, be able to get it into construction and, and get it caught back up on their schedule. We have delivered Food for Families, Common Heart, and Cameron's House of Hope, their vehicles that were surplus, so all of them have their vehicles now and they're in, going to be using those. If we look at FY24 surplus funds, so that's the ones we're, we're working through right now, out of everything that council approved for different projects, we have been actively here in the office purchasing items, surplusing those out earlier tonight on the consent agenda. Y'all approved 16 resolutions for surplus, so that's part of those funds, trying to get those projects and all those things out. Would like to draw your attention to the Moore Park Waterline Extension Project. So that project, if you remember, we reached out to the county to see if they would partner with us again for a 50-50 partnership, kind of like what we are doing in Emerald Woods. We have yet to hear back from them. They've yet to take it to the commissioners to decide where they're going to fund that, how they're going to fund that project, and bring that back to us. Council approved in our list of projects this year what would be our 50% of the design work, and that's all that was approved by council. So that's kind of, we're just waiting to hear back from the county about how they want to do that. So now let's talk about FY25. I know it may seem early for y'all to talk about FY25 for surplus funds, but we are going to, as a committee, look to come back at the next council meeting and open up a call for projects, and that will be for FY25. Like I said, we'd look to maybe look at February 14th through May 14th for the window for projects to be submitted. Internal review happening in May, come back to council in June timeframe for approval of projects so that we could start actively working through those projects in July and August and throughout next fiscal year. So that's kind of where we are with everything. Any questions?
Todd?
That might be for you also, but at the Stormwater Committee, the watershed study is complete, and they, they gave a, I guess, partial presentation. Since that's going to be part of ARPA funds, maybe surplus funds, do you know when, when do we have it scheduled to present here?
I think we have it scheduled for February, is that right?
The next meeting. It's scheduled for presentation.
Okay, all right, so yeah, so we, we're all going to mesh that together then.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mike?
Mr. Mayor?
Some information we got, and Adam doesn't know this, but some information we got from the county today, and I apologize, Adam, is that Moore's Park, they have introduced it to their county commissioners, and they're waiting to try to see if they can get it in their CIP. So we're following up with them probably once every two weeks to find out where they are. Okay, and I'll, I'll, I'll call too. I'll, I'll see, see if we can expedite that a little bit and get them to at least think about us. So anyway.
See, things change so fast.
Thank you, Mike.
All right. Let me know if y'all need anything. Thanks.
Mr. Hunzinger, Indian Trail Complete Street, update.
Uh, Fairwood, maybe grab one thing.
All right, I got one more thing to do.
Or, I'm serious, if I could.
All right, y'all are not missing anything. This is just a timeline. I thought it would be helpful for the council to see while I'm going through the history of this project. I apologize that the plot won't, unfortunately, won't make any sense. It's a little too light for me, but.
It's a little, hurts y'all to see it, but hopefully y'all can see that. All right. So I wanted to basically start from scratch to update, especially for Clarence, because he's not really been, I mean, he's been at council meetings, I'm sure he's paid attention, but again, it's nice to do a refresher and let y'all know why, why it's taking so long to do what we've got to do out there, right? So what we do is we'll go over a little bit of the history, then we'll talk about the county sewer and water upgrades we were working with them about, right-of-way acquisition update, underground utilities, and then pretty much moving forward from there, and then just a project budget, which is basically your CIP ordinance. And then we'll talk a little bit about our public meeting last, last week for our Phase Two project. All right, when you start a project this way and you're, you're trying to go after federal dollars, it's a very good practice to do a study, because again, DOT doesn't know, doesn't keep up with all the streets as far as traffic concerns, as far as things that may be going wrong out there. So basically, you do a study and you try to get that project pretty much on their radar. Well, the town, two directors ago, decided to do a study back in March 2016, and that study basically was to make the downtown complete street project basically pedestrian-friendly. I mean, that's all it was. I mean, wasn't trying to do improvements, traffic improvements or anything else. It's just get people to be able to safely walk the streets on both sides of the road, make it curb and gutter, all that good stuff. Well, so that, so that project basically looked like this, and I know it's hard to see, but basically you had 10-foot sidewalks on both sides and just two lanes of traffic, just like you got now. But you also, based on downtown, kind of principal plan, you had to put in planters, some pavers, stuff like that. Well, that cross section you see right there, that's basically a DOT street. I mean, you would have had to put the five to six-foot planting strip, sidewalks back, well, that's right there, just about 58 and a half feet of right-of-way right there that you would have had to build. And you're basically, you're not doing any transportation improvements, you're just trying to make a friendly walking road. Well, as far as our project, our new project, we're asking only a foot and a half more right-of-way, and we can actually stick a turn lane in there anywhere we want, and we still got the 10-foot sidewalks on both sides. And that's one reason why we told y'all and y'all approved, taken over the street, is we can build this road in a safe manner and be able to get what we need and still not impact these businesses along this corridor. So that's what we did. And so back in 2017, we took this, again, one director behind me, took this to CRTPO, which is our, our agency that the mayor and I attend the meetings. Basically, they're there to basically distribute dollars, federal dollars, to the towns and cities in conjunction with DOT, which plays the middleman between us and the feds. So we took this out, tried to get federal dollars for in 2017, and it was accepted. And basically, it takes about a year, and that agreement was signed in February 2018. So, so that project ended up being basically this project, because again, we were just pursuing the pedestrian-friendly, but what we did was, at the time, it was decided just to do five-foot sidewalk on one side and just 10-foot on the other, to again, to squeeze the right-of-way in as much as possible, not to impact the businesses. So around that time, we had the 2018 agreement signed by DOT, the town center decided, well, we, we want to start our project now. So they came to us around that time, around that year, 2018, and basically decided they wanted to move forward. You see that on the timeline. So, so what we did, and obviously this image here is basically what our project is right now. Y'all have seen this, this is the public meeting, I just wanted to show it one more time. So, so it was approved 2006, so this is your layout for the town center. I mean, this is what they're going to build. They're trying to move for the town homes, which is on the right-hand side of the image, town homes, and then they're going to have a commercial going all the way up to the roundabout, which they actually showed the roundabout right here that we had to build for our project, with our project, using their funds. So they decided, okay, well, we want to start looking at this. So again, well, it's '06, so we have to do an impacts, a traffic impact study, updated one. So that process started around June, again, a couple of months of just talking back and forth to town, it didn't really start scoping until June of 2018. Well, by that time, again, we didn't, we didn't know if they were still moving forward or not, so we, we kept going with our project, which was surveying. Surveying started around June of 2018, around the same time scoping started. Well, that kind of moved forward, and you see the timeline here, you've seen this before in other presentations, is basically the scoping begins 2018, I mean, and then basically it took over two years, almost two years, to get a TIA pretty much approved by DOT. Again, we hadn't took the street over. So they had all the, they had all the power on that road, we didn't, so we had to just basically pretty much put the, the design on hold. Well, we didn't start thinking about that until November 2019. Well, oh, but before that, as you can see on the timeline, in October, I get a phone call from the engineer over at Atrium saying, uh, we got impacts to your Indian Trail Road. All right, so we've got a TIA we're waiting on with the town center, so we moved, and then we got Atrium sitting there telling us, okay, well, we got impacts as well. So again, the next month later, boom, everything's put on hold. I mean, we've already started the design, but again, we got about 25% into it and stopped. So then Atrium basically submits their memo to us about a month later, and of course, it has impacts to two legs of that, our downtown intersection. So basically, I initiate an email to Stallings, basically saying, okay, look, you know, we got to do something here, because again, as you see on this picture of Atrium, you know, this is only Phase One, it just got built. I don't know if people always understand this, but there's actually two more phases, and you can see even the bare lots around surrounding that structure. That's two more phases, that's four, four, five, six, how many buildings, I don't know, but four big parcels that need to be phased in. Well, their TIA that they did is phased, so the improvements they've done out there on Stallings right now is only Phase One. Well, like Phase Two and Phase Three actually impacts us. So I was at the opinion, look, we're not going to wait, it's a 10-year project, and it could be more than that, we're not going to wait for them to sit there and build out the project and impact us, our intersection, and basically put the project on hold, which is what we would have had done with Town Center too, because that's phased, that's a 10-year build-out, and that TIA is phased as well. So again, they wouldn't have had to do any intersection improvements on the downtown intersection of Matthews and Indian Trail Road until later down the road. And it could have been four or five years, could have been six, could have been seven. So again, I came down to council, back to council, did some presentations, and basically said, look, you know, council, we can do this. We can, we either put this project on hold, let these developments built out in the next 10 years, and then we'll come back and put our improvements after the fact. Or we can sit there, rip the Band-Aid off, take these impacts with us, and combine it all, all three, basically three projects, and combine them into one, and get this thing done, construction-wise, in a year and a half, two years, once construction starts. So the council wasn't agreeable that, you know, that would be the best scenario, so we went back to Stallings and we talked to Atrium and said, look, you know, this is what we like to do, you know, but we need the funds now, we don't need the funds later. We can't wait five, six down, years down the road, and you're ready to start Phase Two, just to get the funds. So they agreed, go ahead and give us the funds now, and of course, the town center agreed to do theirs, their part. And so we finally got those two TIAs, right? So now it's, now we've creeped, we have creeped from putting the project on hold in November 2019 to basically looking at these two, two TIAs in March of 2020. So again, you basically have lost pretty much over two years on this project of not being able to do much of nothing. So we contracted out a small contract for our consultant to look at those two TIAs to make sure when you put those two together, they match up and everything, once we decided to start doing the design, implement these together to move forward, it would be a cohesive design. And so we did that, everything looked good, so we decided, okay, now we're going to go and try to get some more additional funds from CRTPO. Well, that's what we did. We went back, went back and got additional funds for the project. This took a lot of coordination from DOT because they, they couldn't sit there and put this project, those additional improvements into our project, so we ended up having two different projects. That was a whole, whole thing about another year of going back and forth to them, and finally, we've got both projects put together with one project number. Well, while all that's going on, you're, all right, now you're at March 2021. I took a look at the Union County CIP and noticed that, okay, well, they've got a CIP to basically do sewer improvements and water improvements in the downtown area in 2028. Well, no, we're not going to wait until 2028. So I start engaging with the county, the county. So I'm sitting there having conversations and going back and forth for months. Finally convinced them, okay, look, you know, y'all got to find the dollars to get this thing done now, because we want to build it now, we don't want y'all to come back, cut the road open to put sewer improvements along that sewer main that runs in the middle of Indian Trail Road. So we move forward, March 21, got that done. So now we sit there and we get, we get them on board, we get the additional funds from CRTPO. We go in there, now we already had stakeholder meetings with all these business owners, every one of them, talked to them about our project, remember the first project, pedestrian-friendly project? So they are aware of that. Well, of course, we got to go back to them, because now we have impacted them more with combining all these improvements. So we start that process in April of 2021. All right, and so while that's going on, CRTPO, we're working with them, it takes about a year, we finally get that agreement in place in June 2021, and we actually then basically update our CIP ordinance to implement those funds. So we went from a $3.8 million project morphed into pretty much a over $6 million project at the time. All right, so, let me get my time, timeline here. So around all that time, we're doing our RFQ, the whole period, trying to get funds, doing stakeholder meetings, trying to get a design team together. Well, we finally get the design team together, and that was actually March, around that March 2021 timeframe, while we're starting to pursue the funding, trying to get them on board. So then we start doing the design, and a few months into it, of course, we figured out, okay, well, the roundabout's not going to work in front of the pharmacy, because we're going to impact Steps Academy. So we come to y'all, come back and say, okay, look, we're going to have to build a fourth leg of this roundabout, because we have impacts. The roundabout has to be the size it has to be. Granted, we shrunk it as best we could, but we had to have another project. So I came back to y'all and said, look, we just need to extend this, we calling it Navaho Trail Extension right now, but obviously we call something different. When we do that, September 21, basically that gets approved. Between getting the funds in June and working, and going through the months of talking to y'all, we get that project approved, and then we start working with DOT about getting the street takeover. Of course, that takes time as well, so we finally get that done, take over the road, February 2022. So again, moving along, but at a slow pace, all right, then we go public meeting. We finally get enough design to be able to present it to the, to the, to the public. We've engaged y'all with, you know, talk started, it's that same timeframe, we started talking to y'all about the Duke Energy Power Pole situation, if we want to do aerial underground. So we have the public meeting. We go through, let's see here. And then going back to the Atrium, so as you can see on this slide, so we've engaged them, I sent that email in January 2020. It took all the, all the way to August 2022 to get actual local, interlocal agreement, and that was not Stallings' fault, that was Atrium's fault. But again, you're dealing with the hospital, time goes by slow with them, and so finally get that done, executed in August of 2022. Survey begins Navaho Trail, September 2022. November, November 2022, after that, Town Center Impact Agreement, we finally get an agreement with them to be able to get funds from them. And so as you can see on the screen, so we get a design contract, and that's, date's wrong, that's actually March, March 2021. We get that lab agreement I told you about in June 2021. Contact stakeholders, get the project going. All right, so then the other items start coming in. All right, so we've got takeover, we got a public meeting, like I've said, Navaho, interlocal agreement, then you have the survey, Town Center agreement, then the complete street design is completed in March 2023. And then we go from March 2023 to basically getting any NC DOT right-of-way plan approval, which takes a few months to June 2023. So by that time, we're still working with Duke Energy, trying to figure out the underground, and then working with y'all to try to figure out, okay, y'all decide, okay, we want to do it underground, how are we going to fund it? So we worked through that process, and finally, funding gets approved in August of 2023. So two, two big delays on this project. You got the TIA that took almost two years, you've got trying to get funding, which took over a year, so you've got three years, well, basically, this project more or less sitting idle, just because two developments decide that, you know, they want to be around town, which we, which are good developments to have. But that's just the way things go sometimes, and so now where we're at is, again, we've got the design done, got Duke Energy squared array, so we went to right-of-way acquisition. So we started that in June of 2023, and then notice to proceed, that same month, project scope is 51 parcels, we have 34 appraisals completed, which is, some of them are obviously multiple tracks, as you probably know, and then we have 40 offers out of the 51 that's actually been submitted out. Now that some of those folks are, are going to come back with counteroffers, they're going to get attorneys, attorneys involved. What I've heard is, it's not a terrible, not a lot of the 40 offers, most of them are in basically a verbally agreement to take the offer, but some, you know, obviously want to think it over, talk to people, you know, I don't know how long that's going to take. Some is going to get, they're competing appraisals, and so I don't know how long that's going to take. But the good thing is, we've got the offers out, we only got a handful of appraisals waiting, and that's just because of the situation with Navaho. of appraisals waiting, and that's just because of the situation with Navajo and the roundabout in our project, because you're dealing with multiple owners on two different projects, pretty much. And so, Rightway Consultants got that, he's starting to engage those folks now. And that's basically where we're at with Rightway. So, now, talking about the county and the water and sewer, so, so, I don't know if y'all know or not, but basically, that CIP I talked about. So, they found funding, and basically, people have existing gray water systems around, in their yards, and basically, they want to take those offline, and basically, give them basically the basic service of sewer, like anybody else has, a four-inch cleanout, you know, sanitary sewer line to your house, and take these offline. So, a major part of that is that. Now, there are gonna be some water main upgrades that the county wants to do, that are fairly, fairly small. But we also have water and sewer that we've got to do, because we don't want to put sewer outside of the road, we want the sewer in the road. Again, we're trying to minimize Rightway impacts with these business owners. So, we've got to put sewer down Unionville Indian Trail Road. And we also have got to put some water main adjustments, because some of our storm, our storm sewer design is obviously impact some of that. So, we've got to move a little bit of water mains and stuff to get, make everything work. Again, you've got underground Duke Energy, you've got stormwater, you got water, I mean, yeah, stormwater, you got water main, you got sewer, you got gas. So, you got a lot of things that's trying to get in this road, so we don't have to buy Rightway against these folks and impact them. So, it gets complicated, and I'll show you why. So, this is just a map kind of showing, I know it doesn't come out great, but it's all I had. Basically, it's kind of showing the green, the greens lines are basically the sewer, that's kind of wrapping around Park, Navajo area, and some off of Matthews Indian Trail Road, is basically the major impacts. All right, so Duke Energy, so we have to put a concrete, basically a concrete block in underground. And as you can see on that screen, there's 15 conduits in that concrete block. We have to put that in the ground like that. And you got to put it to ground deep enough, because they don't let any other utilities use those conduits. So, that's all just for them, and they're not gonna use all those conduits, but they won't share. So, you have to put conduit on top of that for the other utilities. So, we've got to put this in the ground deep enough to where we can put some cover over it, then put more conduits along the top of it, just to get the other utilities in the ground. So, again, not an easy feat, but it's gonna get done. So, we've been, Duke, we've got Duke's design. I mean, they were very on top of things, didn't really delay us that much. It's the other utilities are the problem, and we're trying to work through it. But everybody's busy, and a lot of people are not responsive to emails at times, but we're trying to get through it. But all we're trying to do now is, we know what the cost of Duke's gonna be. We're trying to get calls back, calls back from the four other utilities that's gotta be in there, and what it's gonna take to get that in the ground, because that's, that's on us, we gotta pay for it. So, as of now, we're still on budget, but I don't have costs for two other, two of these utilities, I don't know what they're gonna be. So, right now, based on the, the money that we have in place for this, we're good, but I don't know if it's gonna get more. I don't think it is, but I don't know for sure. All right, so that's where we're at with that. So, moving forward. All right, so you got Rightway Acquisition. Again, unless these folks delay us on competing appraisals and all that, I think we can get all these offers done. And if they, some do go legal and go to condemnation, I think that'll get processed in a timely manner for that May 2024 date. Again, it may get pushed, but we're still shooting for May 2024. Okay, possible delays are, we just found out that the DOT cannot approve the erosion control plans for these projects. They sent a mass email out to all the towns and cities. So, which, which is weird, because they can basically approve every, every other design, but, and you think with federal dollars, they could approve the erosion control, because the DWQ is state, but for some reason, it has to go to DWQ now. So, my fear is, a lot of these projects are gonna be shoving these plants in a DWQ without even one corporate, you know, one office around this county, our surrounding counties, that's in Moritzville, and they don't got a lot of plan reviewers. So, my fear is, we're gonna get this thing in there, and we're gonna be sent for a while. So, I'm hoping that ain't the case, because that's gonna affect that construction authorization in July 2024. Because again, I can't get authorization if I don't have a DWQ permit in place. So, just keep that in mind. We already talked about the private appraisals. All right, again, if things go well, we're gonna let this project advertise and everything in fall 2024. And hopefully get done in two years. That's the goal. All right, so, budget-wise, this is basically your ordinance breakdown. It's nothing you hadn't seen before, that's, that's the cost right now. Again, only cost we're bearing right now is pretty much design, more or less. Everything else is kind of taken, taken care of. All right, any questions about that project? I know that's a lot of information, but I need, I need to get clearance updated, so I might as well do it here. All right, so, let's go to a public meeting. We had a public meeting last week for Phase Two. Again, y'all approved $70,000 to start that design, and so, we've been actually doing it, we're at 25% plans. The stormwater design has been done, now we're moving to utilities. Let me show you some renderings, and I'll get back to the other image. All right, so we showed these at the public meeting, so y'all, everybody can see, in case you didn't go to the public meeting. This is the existing condition down there, schools on your left-hand side, going back towards Gribble Road. This is what it's gonna look like when we, we build it. So, there's 10-foot sidewalks on both sides, streetlights, we're gonna stick the poles on the right, all on the left-hand side, or northwest side of the roadway, unless council decides they want to spend some more money on Duke, Duke Energy Underground. But that's what it's gonna look like if we keep the poles aerial. And we're trying, we're gonna get everything on that side of the road as far as aerial is concerned. Again, we're trying to, we're trying to put a dual-left turn in the middle, again, that gives people places to turn and keeps traffic moving, which is a good thing. We're also trying to implement some landscaping, as you'll see in other pictures. All right, this is aerial, schools on your right-hand side, all right. That's, we're trying to get these islands in there and put some landscape in there, again, beautify the roadway. It's also access traffic common as well, to kind of, it's kind of a view of restriction as far as why you're driving. I think it's a good thing, we can't put them everywhere, because we, we gotta keep access to people's driveways, but we're trying to stick them as much, much as we can. All right, you're at the, basically, the bank, hardware stores on your left, sanctuaries on your right, going towards 74. All right, that's what it's gonna look, Liberty Lane's on your right. Again, trying to get that middle lane all the way down. That way, people getting their drives, everything else, don't have to sit there and stop, wait on traffic. Well, I'm sorry, people don't have to wait for them to get to their driveways and can keep moving. It's a good picture, is that line of traffic? That's nice, ain't it? All right, so, you're further, I'm sorry, you're past, you're past the hardware store, going, getting towards Shady Bluff. All right, that's what it's gonna look like. Again, we're just keeping the poles on the left-hand side. I know y'all can't see the poles very well, but they're kind of camouflaging, but again, they're on that side of the road. All right. Another map we, we sent out that we put out there at the public meeting is this map. And I'll be honest with you, most folks that came in, they got to look at this map, and they didn't want, they didn't even want to talk about Phase Two. They want, they want to talk about, you know, all these projects that are in this area. If you look at that map, on the bottom side, you see the legend, that's, that's, these are all state and town projects in the immediate area of downtown, that has been going on for the last eight, nine years. The first one was, as you see in the purple right here on Indian Trail Road, that was that bridge upgrade. And I'm sure everybody in here remembers that, they closed the road for God knows how many months, and tried to get that thing done. Well, that was the first thing. Then we went in there and fixed 74, which is in the orange. And then now, what we're trying to do is get the complete street done, which is in the middle, that's Phase One right there in the middle. All right, while that's going on, we've been talking about Chestnut Parkway for years, we finally got that bited out. So, what we got, we got two projects. So, we got Phase Three in the light blue, that hopefully is going in construction next month. And then we got DOT's overpass near Town Hall, right over here. You seen where the woods are cleared? Well, that's, that's actually got bit out, that, they're gonna start doing work in April. So, that infrastructure, that, DOT will take two years, will take a year and a half. And that's basically, that's why I talked about these folks. When you start talking about that, that's all they want to talk about, because they are tired of waiting in line on Indian Trail Road. They just want, they want the traffic to move. Well, that road right there is gonna move traffic. Your study that you approved years ago, former council approved, states that 50% of traffic will go on that road, will take, will go away from Indian Trail Road. Now, DOT didn't, didn't like 50%, they thought that was too high. So, we, we designed those improvements, all that, those improvements that we're gonna put on Indian Trail Road are actually 30%. So, you're actually getting more improvements than you may need. But also, think about this, you're actually getting improvements in your downtown intersection, with your turn lanes and stuff that we're gonna put in, before Atrium's impacts with Phase Two or Phase Three of the projects. You know, they may never come. So, you're getting actually more help, more storage in your left turn lane and stuff than you may need, because you don't need them until that project gets fully built out. Town Center, the same way. I don't know how long Town Center's gonna take. Well, we're gonna have that, these improvements in the ground before it gets built out, which is a good thing. So, that Chestnut Parkway is gonna be done, and we're gonna start building our complete street. I mean, scheduling-wise, it's actually turning out pretty well for us as a town. So, we're very fortunate. And then you got Old Mer Road, which is in the blue, that's coming right behind everybody else. So, by the time we get our stuff done, or get close to, well, not done, we'll probably midway in our complete street project, they're gonna let that project in Old Mer Road and start that. So, unfortunately, a lot of, a lot of orange barrels for the next six, eight years of your life. But it's progress, I mean, and a lot of towns can't say that around here. So, it's a good thing. All right, any, any questions for me? Sorry it took so long, but.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
I have a question.
Sure.
I have several, but I'm.
We'll, we'll talk offline.
Will we be alive when this, when this road gets done, or will we be?
What's that? I'm sorry.
I'm joking when I say we'll be alive. And people wonder why, when we say if it takes a while when government gets a hold of them and stuff, and it's not necessarily our government, it's just the process that you have to go through to get this done, to get that done, and you depend on so many different people to do things other than what you can do. And then you end up, it takes a long time, and I look forward to, to it getting done. I, I go back, well, no, you don't have to go back, but I saw CRTPO is putting in how much money into this? Six million?
Yeah, yeah, something like that.
Which I think is important for, for people to understand. That we're getting help from, money from other sources.
Well, that's, that's, that's the 80, that's the, I believe that's the 80%, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and that's one of the reasons, I guess, we decided to, to explain to people, one of the reasons we decided to do this is because, you know, the CRTPO, we're gonna pay for a large part of it, correct?
Right, right, and that's, and again, that's, the unfortunate, the backs, the, 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 the cons, the pros and cons of that is basically, it takes longer. I mean, because you, because the DOT has basically approved four phases of the plan, the 25, the 65, the 90%, the 100. I mean, you're talking a month, month or two each, each review. I mean, you're talking six months to eight months of just dead time. And it's unfortunate it's that way, but that's just the process, and you have to live with it. And that's why it takes, you feel like nothing's gonna happen around here, and it's just because in the background, you got a lot of moving parts, and we're going as fast as we can.
And I think it's important, though, that people realize that, that that is part of the process of why it takes so long, is that we're, it's not, it's our money, but it's, it's not, it's not coming directly from us.
Right.
So, which is a good thing, which is, is a very good thing. And I was not here for that meeting you had the other night, because I was at, at the CRTPO meeting in downtown Charlotte.
Yeah.
So, I would have liked to have been here. Can I, how many people were here?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I meant to tell you, we had 24.
24 people, that's good.
Yeah. And, and like I said, no negatives coming out of the meeting. When you showed them that map, and they start talking about, I started explaining to them all the improvements, pretty much. You know, they, they're just happy to see things that are coming in the next few years. I think that's what it is. Like you said, a lot of them are, you know, are older people, and they basically like, am I gonna be able to see these improvements before I die? I mean, I heard that about five or six times. I said, well, you know, we're going as fast as we can, and again, you're, you're, again, you're very fortunate as a town, and I told them that, and they, they appreciate it.
And I appreciate your, your hard work, and I appreciate the work that, that councils have done in the past. And to get that kind of money, CRTPO, CRTPO is Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization, and it's a big organization that, that we're a part of, and that divvies out money. And last year, we got, we got about a half million dollars last year from, didn't we see, was it last year we got CRTPO, when we got the charging stations?
Yeah, it's two grants, the charge station, the transportation master plan.
Grants that the town applies for. So, okay, with that being said, Tom?
Well, we, we know Phase One Indian Trail Road is funded.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, and as you said, there may be more costs, but, and the cost may go up. I think we've already had cost increase, but like you said, we've got money from the state and different that did a lot of the paying for Phase One. On your Phase Two, I don't think we have, but maybe two million towards that.
Correct.
So, that's not close to being funded at this point.
Yeah, and that's something we're gonna discuss the budget workshop this year about. I mean, because I've got, I've got a cost estimate that I'm gonna have ready for you.
Go ahead.
I said I'm gonna have a cost estimate for, for that project. Again, we, we can't have that till we do 25% plans, and we're there, so, I'm hoping to present that, and then y'all, y'all as a council will have to figure out, do you want to keep pursuing the project or not? I mean, to be honest with you, because it is gonna cost.
Well, that's fair.
Yeah.
Well, there'll be opportunity for council maybe to interject some possible design changes?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I mean, you know, you, I mean, for Rightway Acquisition on 10-foot sidewalks on each side, it's gonna be expensive. And I know that you had a medium, so, you know, just stuff like, instead of having a medium, why not just let that go all the way down as a turn lane, like you have in the other part of the road?
Absolutely.
You know, so, I mean, just, you know, at that point, so, anyway, and you said you had a cost estimate, or you said you're gonna have?
We're gonna have a cost estimate at the budget workshop, when that's, when that, that's ever scheduled, I'm not sure if it's scheduled yet.
I appreciate that.
Oh, no, no problem.
Appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Well, I'm sure you'll have the council, you know, we don't want an incomplete street project, you know what I mean? We will have to carry on and finish Phase Two.
Yeah, so, and again, you can shrink that cross-section however you want. My, my main goal for that rest of that project would be just to try to make it more, more, a pedestrian-friendly corridor all the way throughout. And if we, we don't want the, heck, if we don't want that two-left turn lane in the middle, I mean, that's something to think about, because again, we're just trying to keep move, traffic moving, and that is the most desirable way without impacting more Rightway, so. Any other questions?
Thank you, Tom.
All right, appreciate it.
Mayor, before we move on, Bobby, flip that map back over that shows all of the DOT projects, if you will.
I got it.
Okay. I want the council to take a good, long look at that. That is extremely important, because one of the priorities, I think, for this council is to develop a downtown. And one of the things that we've talked to you about is we don't have any type of grid system or any way to get around there. So, as you look at that, it's very clear, you can clearly see the perimeter. And what will happen is these road projects will get done. It takes a long time. It was a, it was a small corridor in which to work in with Indian Trail Road. Plus, you had two TIA's, plus you had the railroad to deal with, and they're not the most cooperative bunch of people on the face of the earth. most cooperative bunch of people on the face of the earth. But you're gonna look back 10 years from now and say, this really made sense. These were some of the most important projects I worked on when I was on city council. That's just a couple of comments. The other thing I'll add, state money did help out a lot on the Indian Trail Road Phase One. We thank our delegation for that, CRTPO. But if you look at the budget that Todd presented to you a few minutes ago, out of the 14 million and some change, we've got $371,000 in local funds, which is roughly 2, 2.6% of local dollars in that particular project.
Go ahead.
Well, it's like the mayor pointed out, and, you know, he's been here, and I've been here last years where we've talked about this. The good thing is, like you said, it's gonna get done, like Chestnut Parkway Extension, part of that's the state. So they're gonna do it. Phase One Indian Trail Road is funded. Now, Chestnut Parkway Extension, our side, is also funded. So these are projects, the public should know that, you know, there's no additional, you know, we, we've got the money sitting there to do these. Like you said, it's come from the state, CPRTO, and, and different places, the feds. So, and I just wanted to confirm that our part of those Chestnut Parkway Extension was totally funded.
Yeah. Yes, that's correct. And Todd and Jim are excellent in finding where we need to leverage our funds for the maximum benefit. I will remind the council that one of the things you approved, as we talked about, Chestnut Parkway Phase Three, which is ours, that council agreed to fund a temporary intersection at Old Monroe Road, right in, right out. And then when Old Monroe Road is completed, they will address that as a roundabout or full intersection, whatever the state's doing. So we didn't think it was wise to have Chestnut Parkway Phase Three and have the road dead end to nowhere. So I want to thank y'all for that. Also remind you that the state is doing Phase Two. You can see there evidence of all the trees that have been removed. And they are working with CSX to build a bridge over the railroad. I think we may be paying for some improvements on that project. And again, I heard that the railroad changed some of their standards, so we're letting DOT deal with that.
Okay, thank y'all. That brings us up to Melody, Melanie, update on occupancy tax.
I think the manager's gonna start out.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
She's gonna do the heavy lifting. I'm just gonna give some introductory remarks. Mr. Alson Brooks and I were in Wilmington last week, and I think one of the things he heard first out was that North Carolina is not a home rule state. And what that means is all of our powers come from the General Assembly. And for a number of years, we have been trying to get an occupancy tax in Indian Trail. In fact, there had not been, as I understand, an occupancy tax bill approved in the state for the last maybe 10 years or something. And I know some of you have had some discussions with our local delegation. And this year, we got it approved, both us and Stalins, for the ability to enact an occupancy tax. But there has to be an election to make that happen. I'm just gonna give you a brief history about the occupancy tax, and then Melanie is gonna walk you through some of the steps. We're not asking for a decision tonight. We just want to brief you at a 50,000-foot level. We would like to schedule a workshop at some point in the near future to kind of get in the weeds a little bit, to figure out, would you like to call for an election? If you would, when you would like to do that, and how do we put out communication about the election? We can't promote it, we can't work against it, we have to be very neutral in all of our communications. And as part of that, it is probably good for us to talk to some folks that have gone through this, to find out some of the tips that they would recommend. The occupancy tax has been around since 1983, so it's been around a little bit more than 40 years. And it is designed to help promote tourism in North Carolina, and tourism is one of our top industries. And some of the uses of the money is it can be used for destination promotion, tourism-related expenditures, which, which uses vary from festivals and events to capital projects, to providing some municipal services in some of the beach town, funding or debt support for tourism-related capital projects such as convention centers, arenas, or visitor attraction, beach, re-nourishment, we don't have to worry about that here, and general fund revenue for other specific non-tourism uses. Like I said, when we get into a workshop, assuming y'all want to do that at some point, then we can give you some more specifics. And unless there's other questions, I'll turn it over to Melanie.
Good evening. I put two slides in your packet, just outlining the steps of this process. As the manager told you, the next step is to hold a referendum. So just because it took us 10 or 11 years to get the legislature to authorize the town the ability to levy the tax, doesn't mean we can go and do that next month. You all would need to make a motion to direct the county board of elections to conduct an advisory referendum on the issue as to whether or not the public wants to collect an occupancy tax. All it takes is a majority. Once you have a majority that say yes, you may, the tax may be up to 5% of the gross receipts. Then the next step is you all have to adopt a resolution after providing 10 days' public notice in the newspaper, having a public hearing. And then in addition to that, you also have to create a Indian Trail Tourism Development Authority. Because the Tourism Development Authority is the agency that is going to distribute the funds and determine how, how the proceeds are gonna be used. When you create the Tourism Authority, two-thirds, as the manager said, two-thirds of the funds must be used to promote travel and tourism, and the remainder for tourism-related expenditures in Indian Trail. So this isn't a situation where you can levy the tax just to put in the general fund or to, you know, put for staff salaries or anything like that. It has to be directly related to tourism. The authority shall consist of, one-third of the members must be affiliated with businesses that collect the tax in the town. So I would think employees, you know, of the hotels, managers, owners of the hotel would be, would be good to have on the authority. And then one-half of the members shall be individuals who are active in the promotion of travel and tourism in the town. Our finance officer shall be the ex officio financier, finance officer for the authority. He doesn't, he doesn't have a choice. The statute says that he shall be it. And then the town council must also designate the chair. You all decide the terms, whether or not you're gonna compensate the board and all of that. And like the manager said, we can have those discussions at, at a later time. And then the authority shall report the receipts and expenditures each quarter and add at the end of the fiscal year to the town council. So they have to come before you, let you know how much money has been collected and how those funds are gonna be spent. Any questions?
I don't have a question. And Todd, you asked a question right here. I just, for, for everybody who's sitting in the room, I don't know, does everybody knows what a, the occupant, I don't think we've explained what it is, really. An occupancy tax is a tax that when people come, if, if we had a hotel, and we don't have a hotel here yet, but when we do have a hotel, when they come stay here, and there are plans to, to build a hotel, when they stay here, they pay an occupancy tax. So it's, it's not a tax that's really taxed for the Indian Trail people. If you go to, I just made reservations for three different places today, Albany, Georgia, doesn't matter, three different places. And everywhere I made a reservation, there's an, there's an occupancy tax that I have to pay, or that my company has to pay. And they do. But we have not been allowed to have an occupancy tax. Because of the way that state and North Carolina work, we have to do it in this procedure. Now, what doesn't make sense to me is, and has in all these years, in Monroe, they have an occupancy tax, in Matthews, they have an occupancy tax, but we're right in the middle. We touch both of them, and neither one, and, and we don't. And we weren't allowed to have one unless we go through this process. Now, I think in the past, you didn't have to go through. I think you, the, the General Assembly at one time could just approve an occupancy tax. But they hate the word tax, so what they're gonna do is put it on a referendum for us to vote on. And to me, it's a no-brainer. It's, it's a tax that, that, that we do not, we do not pay unless you get a hotel room. If you live here, you're not, you're not likely to get a hotel room here, be very unlikely to get a hotel room here. So anyway, I wanted to explain that, just to, you know, we talked about it. Let, go ahead and explain it. So I hope, I hope we get it, but that's not what we're here to talk about tonight. Go ahead. Good, Todd, sorry.
The voter referendum, does that have to coincide with the municipal election, or can it be any year?
It does not. It could be any year.
Okay. And what's the cutoff date to let the board of elections know we want a voter referendum?
That, I don't know. I'm, we're gonna have to reach out to the board of elections and see what their internal requirements are. The good thing is, we don't have to determine the language that goes on the ballot. It's specific in, in the statute. The legislature told us exactly what has to be on the ballot.
Because I just wondered if we had time this year to put it on the ballot?
I think so.
We do.
I think we do.
I, I mean, you're gonna find that out.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Clarence?
With the 10-day public notice, since most people don't read the newspaper anymore, is there another way that we have to put the notice out to coincide with it, or is it just the newspaper?
We still follow the legal requirements of public notice. That is a newspaper of general circulation in the town. But I'm sure we can, it'll be on the website, you know, we, I'm sure we could do Facebook posts. There's other ways we can also post notice, but you're right, a lot of people aren't reading the newspaper, but we're still required to follow.
Thank you. I'm just curious, and I'm asking you this, Melody, or Tom, Mike, both, would it, would it expedite anything if, if we took a, not made a motion, but just say, just ask everybody what they thought of it? And I would, I would think everybody up here would be for an occupancy tax. And would that expediate it at all, that we want to go ahead and, and do it?
I mean, we'd still have to adopt the resolution.
That's true. But I mean, we could go ahead and start doing it.
Go ahead and start reaching out to the board of elections.
We could start doing something if there's a time limit on doing it.
The state's already passed it for us to be able to put it on a voter referendum. We gotta put it on the ballot.
Right, right, right.
It is the next step. So, yeah.
Right, but, but I understand.
So if you're asking that, I'm for the referendum. I mean, yeah, that's what you're asking.
Right, right.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, so the next steps, we can reach out to the board of elections and find out their timeframe.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, we'll give you a follow-up report at your February meeting on what the board of elections has, has said.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Thank you, Melanie. Thank you, Mike. All right, this new business selection of planning board members to fill two vacant, vacancies. Let's start out with the planning board. All right, you got two people raising your hand. Go, go.
Okay, I'll, I'll go, and then they can go. That's fine. First one is, I'd like to nominate Mike Capup and Canaco to fill unexpired term for seat four of the planning board with term ending June 30, 2025.
Okay. All in favor? I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay.
All in favor? Got Mr. Barber, Mr. Amburgi in favor? All not in, I, I hate almost doing this, because I don't know if you, all, it's, it's not in favor. Raise your hand. Okay. Clarence is not in favor. Dennis, Crystal?
Not in favor.
Okay, so three to, three to two, that fails. Anybody else?
I'd like to nominate David. I'm gonna mess up his last name, but.
Patagamas.
Yeah, Petagemas.
Still appealed unexpired term for seat one planning board with term ending 6/30/24.
All in favor? Unanimous. All right, anybody else?
I want to nominate Ken Curtis to fill unexpired term for seat one of planning board with term ending 6/30/24.
All in favor? Unanimous. Very good. All right, that brings us down to board of adjustments. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate William Wilson to, to, to fill unexpired term for seat four of the board of adjustments with term ending 6/30/24.
Okay, all in favor? Got Mr. Amburgi and Mr. Barber, all against. You got Crystal, Dennis, and Clarence against. Anybody else? Clarence?
I'd like to make a motion or nominate Shamir Alley to fill the unexpired term for seat four of the board of adjustments with term ending 6/30/24.
All in favor? You got Clarence and Dennis, Crystal in favor, all against. You got Mr. Amburgi and, and Todd against. It passes three to two. All right. That brings us to the discussion items. Discussion of allowing roosters and town limits. Ms. Deese?
Good evening again, mayor and council. What a beautiful animal, right? I just couldn't help myself. So this is an item that we heard from public comment. I think we've had some conversations. I just have a few key points to share with you, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. We did poll the North Carolina listserv for planning. We have a, basically like a email list where we can reach out to all the planners in the state. So town manager asked us to reach out to those folks. I will tell you quickly that when I was a young planner, I read the listserv a lot to learn things. And we had this thing called Chicken Friday, right? And every Friday, you got made fun of if you didn't post something related to the topic of chickens. So this, this has caused potentially Chicken Friday to be stirred up again. The, the planners across the state had a lot of fun with my question, so. But in, in some of that fun, we did discover that overwhelmingly, the majority of jurisdictions prohibit roosters, like 95% of the, the majority, the responses we got prohibited, prohibited roosters. And then the other five mentioned it through their nuisance ordinance. So it, it might would allow roosters, but then under the nuisance ordinance, it said you have to basically keep the rooster quiet. So I'm not sure how you do that necessarily. But a rule of thumb for a planner is that you should not amend the ordinance for one specific situation, because that normally has negative consequences. And then we also have been in communication with the sheriff's office, and we do realize that allowing roosters, if that is your choice, you just need to understand that that is going to increase calls for service for the sheriff's office, because the, the noise complaints or the nuisance complaints will, will possibly come after hours. So that's all I have for you, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, we've talked about this. Any discussion, any more? Mr. Barber?
How many jurisdictions were surveyed?
We sent out to the entire state. We probably looked at about 50 different jurisdictions. Not everyone, not all 50, we got responses from the listserv. I mean, planners were busy, so, you know, folks often don't respond. But we did do additional surveys in the nearby area so that we can know kind of what the surrounding folks do as well.
And do we know how many sheriff's calls are getting in the county for roosters?
We do not have those numbers. I do know that within the last two years, we've had 17 cases, code enforcement cases. Now, that, that number of 17 really doesn't mean a lot, because in the way we handle code enforcement, we, we really try to take a common sense approach. So if you have a rooster, your neighbor's complained, we're gonna approach you, we're gonna talk to you. We're, we're not gonna try to, you know, create a case immediately just to show numbers. So that, that 17 is, is probably very low compared to the actual enforcement we've been doing.
Yeah, there's been 17 calls for roosters?
No, there's been 17 cases within the last two years. So a situation where a code enforcement officer may go and talk with you about a complaint they've got. If you don't handle the situation, then we are forced to create a case and actually send you a violation. So 17 situations where escalated to that, that point.
I just didn't know we were getting roosters calls, but that's okay.
We are, we are.
You know.
We, we get all sorts of calls. We, we get all sorts of calls in, in the code enforcement world.
We're still a small town. Andy Griffith?
Yes, Dennis?
So, from what I understand, with the lar, there are larger cities do allow roosters, but they require a permit. And from a little bit of studies I've done on it, if somebody does call on a rooster in those cities, and there's a complaint, then I guess they're gonna be warned, and then after that, then they remove the rooster. So, whether you have a legalized rooster or not, you still could possibly lose your rooster if you don't control the noise.
Correct, that, that's actually, you're correct, the city of Charlotte, which I was very surprised with. I would think that most of the larger jurisdictions would prohibit them. We actually got a lot of the feedback from, from the state List Serve was smaller communities, even in more rural areas, that, that prohibited roosters as well.
Really, I mean, to be really, really safe, if you want to have a rooster, is to check with your neighbors and whatever, and see if they have a problem with a rooster, so you don't get complaint calls.
Correct, I will say that we, we do not actively go look for roosters. We do, we do enforce this on a complaint basis.
Now, with dogs, do you do the same thing? I mean, how do you take care of a dog that's barking that people, you know, won't stop?
It's very similar, it goes up under the, the nuisance noise ordinance as well, but we, we get, we deal with a lot of those situations as well.
Imagine you'd get a lot of dog calls, yeah.
How many cases did you have on that?
Hey, Tom, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. They, now I understand, you know, what you came in here about changing the ordinance, but my question is, is, you know, is, there not an option of maybe issuing someone a special permit, or something like that, I mean, in a case-by-case scenario? Instead of just opening the whole town to roosters, I didn't know if, like, if, I don't know if that's a legal option without changing the ordinance, or, you know, I, I know in zoning, you can do a special permit, but I didn't know in something like this, you know, or, I don't even know if that's a possible scenario. I'm just asking.
Yeah, I, I would think it would be more of, as Councilmember Gabe was alluding to, is, you know, if your neighbors don't complain, we're not gonna come look for your rooster. Otherwise, there's no way for the town to go on record and say, yes, Councilmember Barber, you can have a rooster, but Mayor, no, you cannot. So, the, the code would have to be amended. Even if you wanted to craft some language to give special situations, right now, that, that code that's in place would not allow for, for that.
I know we got roosters in town, some people have some. I don't know if their grandfather did, and, or how that works, but, anyway. That, that was my question, to, you know, see if there was a special scenario, and if, if Mr. Bushy could look into something that legal avenue or whatever. But that, that was just, that was my question, thanks for the answer.
Most permits run with the land, run with the property, right? So, if the homeowner moved, they couldn't then take the rooster with them?
Dennis, and then we're gonna wrap it up, go ahead.
One of the problems that we've got is, we're still, I mean, the geography of this town is big, but we still got an awful lot of rural areas still in this town. And so, I mean, the complication is, can you, I mean, you, somebody who has a small farm, I mean, you know, they, they should really be allowed to have a rooster, so. That's what complicates the whole issue, and, of course, you know, back when they could annex you into a town, and you couldn't stop if you had a small farm, and you had roosters, and then what do you do? So, I mean, you kind of almost have to take it on a case-by-case basis, and then, you know, when the complaints come in, then you, you know, then you, you gotta address it. So, it's a, it is a hard, hard situation.
It is, and we, we could, I think, I believe, back in December, when we broached this subject, I mentioned that RSF, I think, would be appropriate, but that doesn't help the, the current situation.
Very good, well, that brings us to, now, we don't have a, a motion on this, is this just a nod of the head?
We, we would just simply need direction if you want us to pursue amending the ordinance, because this provision is in the Unified Development Ordinance and not the municipal code. It would be required to go to Planning Board with all state law, you know, notice requirements.
Okay, I think, Todd, I don't, I don't know who made this, but let's say a guy has, is, is in the town, and he's, nobody lives around him, and he's got, and he gets a rooster, okay? Not really bothering anybody. If somebody doesn't call and complain about that rooster, then he's, I mean, what are they gonna do? I mean, it, it, it's, if you live in an out, an area that, that it's not, then, then, that's probably cool. It's okay, you know, I would, if, if I did that, and it could be, if, if I already had a rooster, and nobody's complaining, they're probably not going to complain. But if they do complain, you, you know, you got a problem. And I have asked, I, I, I took this pretty seriously, because I wanted to find out, and I'd say ninety-nine percent of the people that I, I was right, I didn't find anybody that was for roosters in town. And, and the reason I say that, and I think you have a good reason to want one, is there's so many neighborhoods now, you have Brandon Oaks, you have Holly Park, you have Bonterra, and you live on a quarter acre lot, and.
Or less.
Or less, yeah, and on Bonterra, you live in less than a quarter acre lot. And I love my neighbors, but if my neighbor guy had a rooster, and I don't know if I'd love him anymore. And, and here, it, it is the, the, there's a guy that lives down the road and across the street, he's not in the town, and he has roosters. And I stopped on the way to a council meeting, this is back in December, and they were, they were sitting at the supper table, they had two sons, grown sons sitting there, and I, I walked in, and they let me in, and I said, listen, we're, we're talking about roosters, and you have roosters, and, and you have chickens right there by Poplin Elementary. And I said, what, what would you think about bringing roosters into Indian Trail? And he looked at me like, are you crazy? You know, you, you really want to do something? And his two sons, and I'm not sure if they live in Indian Trail, they were grown, said, not, not in my neighborhood. You're not, you're not gonna bring, bring in a rooster. And, and here's what he said. He said, roosters, roosters don't just crow at six o'clock in the morning, they could crow ten hours a day, or twelve hours a day. And you, you don't have any control over them, you can't take them in the house, I don't think. I've never seen roosters in a house. But, you know, and if a dog barks, you, as you know, Andy, people get, you get dog barking, you get, but you can take that dog in the house. And, and we got people complain about dogs, you know, but you get them. So, it's not, I don't think that we don't want to do it, and that, it's just, I don't think the townspeople want roosters in, in Indian Trail. That, that, and that's what I wanna, I wanna do what the townspeople want to do, so. Anyway, with that being said, can we get a general consensus of what you, what, what you think? Yes?
Mr. Bushy asked us to look into it, so.
Yeah.
We did, and, you know, so, I mean, the council can do what they want. I'm indifferent on it, I know most HOA's are gonna allow animals, but that, you know, so it's kind of different, you know, Bonterra's and probably HOA, and my HOA would have stuff against stuff like that, so, you know, but, anyway. We looked into it.
Councilmember Barber, that's actually a really good point, you know, we have, I think, over ninety HOAs now, so we will be creating a rule that largely wouldn't apply to, to most parcels.
Joe's a good friend and a fellow Lions Club member, and I feel for him, I really do, and, and I really kind of like, you know, come up with a don't crow, don't tell, or, or whatever, but I, I hate for him to leave tonight without some kind of a firm situation, and, and I've come up with a solution. I have a rooster for him that falls within our UDO, and it goes to take home to the wife Chris.
He might not think that's funny, but Mr. Bushy, I, I, I see him smiling, so Dennis, I think you're safe when you walk out the door tonight.
Tell Chris I said hello.
I just, it just reminded me, just take the ten seconds, I broke my leg one time, and my sister was at the beach. She's seven years older than me, and she said she was bringing me something back from the beach. And I was all excited in a wheelchair, and she brought me back a blow-up leg, and I hated her for it. And I didn't think it was funny, and I did not think it was funny. She thought it was funny, and it was not, but anyway. So, Clarence, we'll start you in, just yea or nay, and then we'll go, or whatever. Okay, Dennis?
I'm, I'm for don't crow, don't tell, I mean, you know, check with your neighbors, and.
So, you're.
I got a neighbor that has a rooster, and I don't mind, I grew up in a rural area, so I don't complain. So, I, I just kind of like that, you know? If nobody complains, and you got a nice little place to keep a quiet rooster.
That's not what we're asking, Dennis.
I mean, I'm, I'm for, you know, guidelines on roosters, or any other nuisance that people can't live with. But I think that we need to be lenient in, in this town, because we are so diversified. We got, you know, we do have subdivisions, and I can see an executive not wanting to walk out on his deck with some clients, and a rooster next door crowing and carrying on. But then again, you know, quiet little neighborhood, but so, we get, you know, we do have to have some kind of a control.
Crystal?
So, I'm gonna say no, I don't think that we should change it for that, but, I mean, if nobody complains, go for it.
Okay, Tom? Okay, Tom, and Todd?
I think the matter's resolved.
Okay, it's resolved, okay, I, I'm sorry, but I don't, don't think we're, I don't, consensus is we're not gonna change it, correct? Okay.
Thank you for the direction.
Okay, brings us back, brings up to this discussion of seventy-four bus service. Mr. McLaurin?
I'm paying attention to you, I'm just gonna refer to an email. FY twenty-four, you agreed to work with the county to fund the seventy-four X bus line. As I reported to you, the increase in ridership was five point five percent, according to CATS, when you measure from October to October. The county's contract with CATS runs from October first to September thirtieth, and they have to give an answer to CATS by January thirty-first, whether they're gonna continue the route. And I think it's been the consensus, and I think it's been a good decision by this board, that we support the seventy-four X bus. So, I had some conversations, hang on a minute. I had some conversations with the county back in December, whether we were interested. The answer was, my understanding from the board is that we would support it, but we do it as part of our budget process. And so, I have before you in your agenda package tonight, an inter-local agreement that I'm gonna ask you to approve. The inter-local agreement covers both the current fiscal year FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five, and it runs through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The formal contract is between CATS and, and Union County, but we have agreed, as it says in the contract, to help support the bus route. So, let me tell you what we have been doing on our end, just so you know. We have created a dedicated webpage for the seventy-four X bus line. We have been sharing information about the seventy-four X bus line in both the August and September newsletters. We have shared it on our social media page over ten times. We have been sharing it in our weekly IT update, Indian Trail update, ten times to date. The most recent was on January fifth update, and that particular sharing, the seventy-four link was, we monitor clicks like everybody else, was clicked more than a hundred times. So, there's interest out there for this bus line, and we can increase it. I did talk to the Assistant County Manager today to express our support in this effort, and really encouraged him and his staff to really push CATS, to try to make sure that we get the word out about the seventy-four X bus line. The buses I've seen, I've seen some that have not been quite as full as others, but I've seen others that have been full. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but otherwise, we would ask your approval.
We saw an increase from last year, fifteen hundred dollars for twenty-four, I believe?
Five point five percent, I think it's.
I'm talking about the, the.
The numbers.
The money that we have to.
Oh, yeah, we, we went up about fifteen hundred, because we haven't gotten the price.
What do we anticipate for twenty-five, then?
They don't know yet. They will look at it again in December of this year, and then the county will make a decision whether they want to continue to contribute or not. As a side comment, I will mention Councilmember Ambergy. I have encouraged the county to have talks with Stallings about an atrium, about having a stop there. And I don't really know why Monroe pulled out, but it probably wouldn't hurt for Monroe to get back into it also. Because one of the things, and you heard this last year, there's a lot of people that work in downtown Charlotte, that if they can get on that bus, they can read, they can study, they don't have to worry about wear and tear on their car, they don't have to worry about the two hundred dollar a month parking, and it, it works out.
Go on, Clarence?
Just a comment, you know, when the riders came before council, I wasn't on the council, and so I was running for council, and I actually went out and spoke to them. And a lot of the riders were very appreciative, and I went back to visit. You got, about half of them are coming from Monroe, they're pretty excited, and that keeps cars off the road. But also, you know, my sister was a bus rider, and she really appreciated that she can jump on the bus and get to Charlotte. But I went back and, you know, tried to keep account, and it is, the ridership is increasing. But also, very, something kind of weird is, there's actually more people riding the bus back. So, that is something to keep in consideration also. But, you know, when the time comes, I like to make a motion, but I just wanted to add that, because I've seen, I personally went out there, seen the ridership is up, and especially, like I said, coming back as well.
Very good, well, if nobody, anybody else, you have, I just want to say, Clarence, I know who's been down there to the, he gets up early, what time's that first bus leave?
Six thirty-one.
Six thirty-one, so get down there and talk to the bus riders, and then there's another bus that comes, what time's it come?
Seven oh four.
Seven oh four.
Or the park.
Appreciate you going down there and, and actually speaking with them, and finding out how many people are riding the bus. And, you know, I think as a council, I'll try to be quick, we, we need to look at this, because if Monroe has got half the people riding the bus, and they're coming to Indian Trail to, to, to get on it, and we're paying, we're footing the bill for it, you know, we, we need to ask for a little help on that. And I don't mind, you know, but, but for them to bail out, and they're got half the people, and they come, you know, we could do the same thing, and just go to Matthews and bail out, you know, we could just keep bailing out until we get, and Matthews is, I think, maybe part of CATS, it's part of Mecklenburg County, anyway. And I don't want to do that, so maybe we can, we can ask, maybe next year, we can ask you, Gary, to, to, to say, hey, man, help us out here, because we, we need help. I think we all would, would agree with that, that why we're footing the whole bill, I don't know.
Well, I think, Mayor, if I could suggest, the whole bill's like a hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty thousand, but we're the only, we're the only municipality that's agreed to participate.
I mean, we're on the municipality paying, county pays the rest. So, if you'd like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the inter-local agreement with Union County as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous?
Okay, in your original agenda that went out on January ninth, you saw a project update. A lot of that, we've already discussed tonight. I put an extra copy at your desk. I will mention a couple of things that are coming up at your February meeting, and I have a couple of items, manager update items, that aren't in your agenda package that I'll talk about. Our next meeting is February thirteenth, we've got ARPA resolutions, we will present a proposed FY twenty-five budget schedule. We do have a public hearing on some UDO amendments, watershed plan, as we talked about earlier. We're also gonna ask the council to consider approving a policy to allow us to take the income that we're getting off the two parcels on this land back over here, and designate it to the. and designate it to the multi-generational community center fund that you set up going back to July 1, 2023. I've also received a request from one of the council members that the cemetery sign is missing. We don't really know where it went, who put it up, and when it got gone. So I've agreed, we'll put it on the agenda and see if y'all want us to put a new cemetery sign up there. We have been in touch with the local delegation. We think that they will be here on March 12th. We will confirm that in the next few days. Speaking of legislature and legislative, there is a chamber event on Friday, February 2nd, from 8:30 to 10 at the Ag Center. Deadline for registration to that event is tomorrow at noon. I'll be out of town that day, but I've got a couple of staff members attending, and I know some of you plan to attend. I think it's very important that we have a good show, showing from the town of Indian Trail. Also, February 15th, from 5:30 to 7:30, there's an elected official reception. Deadline for that registration is February 9th. I'm unable to attend that, but hopefully you can fit it in your schedule. That is a Thursday night. Should I continue on, Mr. Mayor?
You're there.
I'm there. My throat done dry out first. I've got two items I want to talk about very briefly. One is the GFOA, GFOA award that we won recently. And then I want to talk to you about our Priority Visioning Workshop. And all of you have had the opportunity to speak to Mr. Walton, and I certainly appreciate you taking time out of your day to do that. If you remember, in talking about the GFOA award, about 18 months ago, we saw a need to build a better budgeting system, one with more transparency, one with more accountability, and one that would eliminate some of the errors of exchanging spreadsheets back and forth. And so I asked the finance department, I said, go out and look for a computer budgeting software which would meet our needs and allow us to tell our story, not only to you, but to the public in a more better fashion than just a bunch of numbers. Because numbers in and of themselves, without some explanation, is not very helpful. Finance department went to work. They identified a product put out by ClearGov, a nationally recognized and respected company that was selected. And so we appreciate you agreeing to fund that project. And so last year about this time, you'll recall, the finance department was doing a couple of things. One, they were working on the FY24 budget that we're in now, and at the same time, rolling out a new software package and tying it into our IT infrastructure. As we got down to the final layers of budget approval in the May-June timeframe, the staff started working on an application to the GFOA, which is Government Finance Officers Association, to be considered for the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. A few days ago, it was a complete surprise. We won the award. As I told you in an email, this is a big, big, big deal. Very rarely do cities, first time out, get the award. To my knowledge, we're the only city in Union County that has gotten it, at least in recent memory. I haven't gone back to check. This award represents a significant achievement by the town and reflects the commitment of the governing body, you and the staff, to meeting the highest principles of government budgeting. And we had to satisfy some national guidelines, or 14 mandatory guidelines. And part of, one of the things, I read these, some of the comments by the scores, and they talked about how well the town had tied the budget to the priorities that y'all had adopted in 2021. That's why we keep coming back to those priorities. We also had to add information that wasn't required by North Carolina law, but it needed to be in there, which would include things like mission statements, objectives, goals, accomplishments, performance measures. We've also have our budget up on the website, and all of y'all, I think, got a copy of this big book right here. This was a major undertaking, but the staff stepped up. And as I mentioned, did something that many municipalities do not do, and you should be proud of them. In a few meetings from now, when we get the award, we're going to have a formal presentation to recognize the finance staff for their hard work. And while the finance staff was the lead organization on this, all of our leadership team contributed in their way of providing the things such as accomplishments, performance measures. Abby, I think, helped them, and Bobby, and about everybody on the staff had some role to play in that. So I'm very proud of them. As we start down the path of the FY24-25 budget, we look forward to making this book even better to provide the best product possible. So now let me shift to the other item I want to talk about. I appreciate y'all agreeing to fund a contract with Mr. Walton for us to look at a priority-based strategic work plan. You've heard me say for the last four or five months that the objectives we developed in 2021, some of you were on the board at the time. It was COVID, it was remote, it was a tough two sessions to get through, but we came up with nine priorities. And those priorities have served us well for a long time, but it's now time to step back and look at those and see, what do we want to change? How do we put more specificity in the priorities so we can better measure our performance? Mr. Walton, who has over 40 years of service, started his career in the town of Wake Forest near Raleigh, and later went to work as an assistant to the Speaker of the North Carolina House, and then ended up in Charlotte. Now, just because he worked in Charlotte a number of years, he ain't no big city guy, I'm going to tell you. He grew up in the sand hills over around Southern Pines, Aberdeen, that area, and his roots are really good old North Carolina country. So he, after retirement, he continues to work. He leads the Capstone Program, which if you're familiar with the Masters of Public Administration at UNCC, that's special projects that students do. And a lot of those involve working in smaller towns. When Ruffen Hall was a long-serving manager in Raleigh, retired, they formed the company. And since 2021, they've worked with both big and small towns. They've worked with Cary, which is about 80,000, to Morrisville, which is right outside of Raleigh, very similar to us, which is about 30,000. Wilmington. I like to compare us a lot to Holly Springs. If you've been up to Holly Springs, we're very similar. We're right near a big city. We've got a big Beltway. They've got a downtown, but we're working on ours, and ours is going to be better, Tom. He'd worked with Stallins for a number of years. In fact, he's still working with Stallins, and he's worked with Maiden over in Catawba County, which is 3,700 people. So the purpose of the workshop is not for him to come in and say, well, they do this in Town A, so you need to do this in Town A. It's not that at all. You were elected to create a vision for the town and to set the priorities for the town. And that's why he wanted to meet with all of you individually to get your ideas as elected officials. What do you think's important? And we wanted to extend it, instead of doing just a one year, extend it several years. And as we get better at this, start to extend it even further. He's met with the staff several weeks ago. And while we're a government agency, we're also a business. Make no mistake about that. We're a business. We've got 40,000 customers that we work for, and we serve everything from police protection to picking up their garbage, to fixing their potholes. And so we have, we have to think about, what are we accomplishing today? And what are we going to be accomplishing five, 10 years down the road? You've had a great presentation tonight by Todd Hunsinger, and you're seeing those roads start to come together. And as they come together, what is the next chapter this council wants to roll up its sleeves and get involved in? We talked a little bit tonight about Phase 2 on Indian Trail Road. Where do we want to build the next park? Where do we need to do sidewalks and things like that? And it takes some setting of priorities to make that happen. So while we are having businesses come in, we are having industries come in, we always have to keep our eye on the future. So when we originally planned this thing, we talked about doing it in two sections. One is a section on Friday from 9 till 1 on February 23rd. And I think the second one is right now scheduled for March 5th, which is on a Tuesday. The first one's on a Friday, the next one's on a Tuesday from like 9 to 12. And we had originally talked about having it offsite at the hospital, but a comment was raised about COVID and flus and everything else. So if you would like to have it here in this building, we can do that. You know, I just need to get some nodding of the heads one way or the other. We would ask if we have it in this building that we, that y'all not sit up there, that you sit out here in a round table. And at the end of the day, we want this to be a workshop for you. It's not for the staff. Staff can offer suggestions. We can offer you some comments and suggestions of things you might want to consider based on what we see on a day-to-day basis. But because you're the council, it is your responsibility to set the vision, and it's our role to try to help you carry it out. And that's all I've got to say. Oh, one more important thing. Like you know, for any time the majority of the council gathers to discuss town business, it's an open meeting. So the public is welcome to attend. That's all I got.
Okay. Wow, this has been a good, long meeting, and I commend the Boy Scouts for sitting back there through all this. You guys were great. You, I, I know how bad you wanted to run out that back door. You know what? Thank you for staying, and you've earned your badges today. I can tell you that. Really have. Okay, I think that brings us to council comments.
Councilmember Gay?
Thank you all for coming. I'd wanted to congratulate the finance department, Jim, for their award that they've received. And I know you had, unfortunately, there were a lot of criticism during the campaign about budgeting and that sort of thing here. And I think that you answered a lot of the comments that were erroneously made. Glad that our consultant that we've hired got a good review from Mike, that, you know, unfortunately, some people put information out that's not true, and I understand that, but I found him to be very informative, the little bit that I had. So I think that may fall under our ethics policy about social media and things that are said. But anyway, I hope everyone has a safe trip home, and let's look for some warmer weather, and see you at the next meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Ambergy?
Again, Jim, congratulations to you and the Alicia's. God bless everyone. Have a great evening.
Senator Brooks?
Well, as newly elected, I, if you saw me on Facebook, I'm excited about everything. So I have a lot to say tonight, and I'll try to make it as quick as I can. I'm going to be all over the place. But by the time we are at our next meeting in the February, which is Black History Month, hopefully, we all can celebrate the achievements that Americans made in this country. And also, with that said, the Union County Library is holding its Black History Month Fashion Walk and Hair Show Sunday, February 4th at 3:00 p.m. Not exactly sure of the location, so you can check their website for that. Just again, want to mention the Rotary fundraiser with the Washington Wizards, February 2nd, 7:00 p.m. at Sun Valley. Let's see. Jim, or staff, congratulations on the budget award. Well deserved. And staff as a whole, I just want you to know that the word is out that you have done great things and it hasn't gone unnoticed. So thank you for that. I'm sorry I missed the Crime Stoppers fundraiser, but I was out at the Essentials of Government. So thank you for, to all these hardworking people up here that attended that and represented Indian Trail. At the Essentials of Government, one thing I learned that I wanted to bring back is that everyone in North Carolina is being impacted by people moving from other areas. It's funny because just like everyone I spoke to said that they are the number one, they're number one in the country as far as growth. And I'm thinking, everybody can't be number one. But the point is, we're all going through it. We're all having people move here. We're all having, you know, we don't have the infrastructure. And if you've been in a place for a long time, you're overwhelmed with people from other areas coming in. So you know, it's here, we have to deal with it, and this council will do their best. I want to correct something that I said last time. I said that we all should have name tags. What I was trying to say is, I like to see us get hello my name, those little stickers, so that everyone can wear them and we can get to know each other, the people who come to the meetings. And thank you, those of you who came to the meeting. Last thing is that I had a citizen tell me that I should explain my votes when I do vote. And, Mr. Musi, I want you to know that I actually talk to a lot of people about your situation. Or as far as roosters are concerned, I actually have chickens, but we don't have roosters for that reason. But there were some people that were for you, but the majority of them said that it wasn't a good idea. But again, I'm excited to be elected. I tell everybody that I work for the town now. I want to be Employee of the Month every month. And considering I was the only person elected, I have a good chance to be Rookie of the Year. But I'm excited to work with everyone up here. So thank you.
You're the Rooster of the Month.
Oh, listen to you.
Senator Barber?
Congratulations to Jim and your staff. That was one fancy budget book. I think that was twice the size of the one I first got here four years ago. So, yeah, 270-some pages, I think. Anyway, it was a digital book, correct? Yeah, good job. The National Alliance on Mental Illness, the Union County chapter is having its annual meeting, open house this Sunday at 5:00 p.m. at Benton Heights Presbyterian Church on Concord Highway down in Monroe. If you'd like to attend, I think one in five people are dealing with mental illness. They offer a free family-to-family class, which helps the family deal with mental illness individuals. So if you'd like to attend, that is this Sunday at 5 o'clock. I'd like to wish Captain Hunky, he's not here, but thank him for a job well done and taking care of our Indian Trail Division and wishing well in retirement. With that also, I'd like to congratulate Captain Mullis taking over, and I know he's going to do a great job. And Sheriff made a great choice. Thank you. Other than that, I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and God bless you. Thank you.
Councilmember Buholic?
All right, I do want to thank everyone for coming again. Encourage people to come and get involved. It does make a difference. I wanted to thank Mr. Sides for mentioning our parks. I think that our parks are beautiful as well, and I think we definitely need more of them. And hopefully, in the near future, we can start working on something like that. Because Indian Trail is known for our parks, and I do think that we've done a wonderful job. Congrats, Captain Mullis, well, soon to be Captain Mullis. Welcome. You've been part of us already for so long, but we definitely are excited for you to join. And just really excited for the budget workshop, looking at our priorities and making sure we get them set. We want input from you as we're working through this budget, these priorities. So, you know, reach out to one of us and let us know what your priorities are for the town. One event that the mayor did not mention is there's Coffee with the Mayor on February 9th. So that would be before our next meeting, I believe. So I just wanted to put that out there. It's at Rock Hill Coffee inside Extreme Ice. Is that correct, David? Okay. All right. Other than that, congrats, Jim, and pretty much the entire staff, because everyone had something to do with the budget. So, you know, congratulations to all of you. It's a lot of work. I wouldn't want to sit there for hours and hours to do it, I wouldn't want to sit there for hours and hours to do it, but, you know, we really do appreciate how much work you've put into it and how good it, you know, it did turn out. Other than that, have a wonderful night, and I will see y'all next time.
Thank you.
Mayor Com.
Okay, I'll try to be quick. Boy Scouts, thank you for coming again. If you guys ever need me to come help you or come speak, let me know. I'd love to come down and talk with you. Lastly, did y'all eat before you came? We've got a whole bunch of chicken fingers back there. Before you leave, who likes chicken fingers? Tell the truth. Y'all do, don't you? Yeah. Go back there, there's, I hope I didn't overstep my boundaries, but if I did, go enjoy them. Get out of, go over there and eat. We'll get you, I'll take you back there. Okay. Captain Mullis, looking forward to you, buddy. Clarence, real quick, welcome. This is actually really your first meeting, other than being introduced here. And appreciate all you do, appreciate you, all you did for the bus down 74, going there in the mornings, and it's just the way you are. You're a worker, and thank you for all your hard work. And I look forward to working with you the next three years, four years. Jim Wannawich, fantastic. 19,000 people in the country applied for what you got. And you know, the best thing about what you did is you made it very understandable for people like me, who aren't CPAs and aren't accountants, and like many of the people that live in Indian Trail, where we can all understand what a budget is. I think that's the most important thing that you did, and you do a great job. You keep our tax rate at 18 and 1/2%, and you work miracles with that, with that pen. And thank you so much to both Alicia's and everybody in your apartment, department. You deserve it. I'd like to say quickly, too, that staff, you're great. Everything y'all do is great. Appreciate the, the long, Todd, what you did tonight. It took a while, but, you know, you explained it. And Adam, I appreciate you. Brandy, I really appreciate what you do. Brandy got some compliments this weekend, because I got several emails over the weekend, and I pushed them on to Brandy to ask her the questions on how to fix them. And I didn't expect an answer, but I got answers, and she answered the people that, and she got some kudos from it. We had some residents that said, thank you very much for your hard work and for your prompt response. And thank you. You make, you make the mayor look good, and that's important. It's very good. Thank you so much. I appreciate you. Appreciate what you do. I think I covered everything I wanted to cover here. Thank everybody for coming, and have a great New Year, and I hope to see you here. Remember the Harlem Wizards, if you want to go. Andy's going to dunk out there, and Jim's coming back for us to do the dunk contest again this year. So looking forward to seeing y'all. Thank you for coming. God bless everybody. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.